Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our Newburgh Town Hall session tonight as we are going to be going over what some potential protocols are for returning to in-person worship and other activities here at the church. I want to especially thank you for joining us tonight, and hopefully you're watching on a laptop, or maybe your smartphone or tablet, sitting outside on your porch and enjoying some beautiful weather today. But regardless of where you are, we're glad that you're here. And as we begin tonight, if you would please join me in a word of prayer, and then we'll have an opportunity to get to the information we want to present, and then we'll have a chance to get to your questions. So let us pray. Gracious and holy God, as we come together this evening, we are mindful of how we are longing to be together, how through the midst of this pandemic and our time of isolation, we have found new ways to be together, and how you are calling us, and how you are leading us to discover those new ways, even as we long to see each other face to face. So guide our hearts this evening, and continue to strengthen our spirit, as we not only endure this time together, but as we seek new ways forward in this new reality, through the grace of your Son, Jesus Christ. It's in his name we pray. Amen. Well, again, we're glad that you are here tonight, and I'm joined this evening by our Director of Music and Worship Arts, Kyle Berry, and our Director of Student Ministries and Communications, Ally Belsky, is behind the camera tonight, but will be on the mic and helping us to answer your questions later on tonight, as we come to the question and answer sessions, and as we look about how we try to resume our in-person activities and worships. Before we get into some of those specifics, I want to emphasize a few things. First, as the situation has progressed, we have been developing a plan to phase in, in consultation with the Michigan Conference of the United Methodist Church, and we have used that that will act as our guide over these next several months. And we also want you to take note that we have not, and we will not, attach any specific dates and times to this plan, because we continue to adjust according to government initiatives and at the direction of the bishop and our public health officials. It's also conceivable that over the next couple of years, we will face varying degrees of shelter-in-place and public gathering standards, and perhaps we might even go back and forth between those standards, depending on conditions and how they are located. So for the safety of all of our society, we are following the lead of our conference and our bishop, stating that we will follow the guidelines of the governor of the state of Michigan with respect to all shelter-in-place and public gatherings, and that we will specifically not feel a need to resist for political, faith, or First Amendment reasons. Now with that, I want to give you some highlights around worship and general building policy, and as we go along, Kyle will address more specific issues related to our worship itself. We have, again, a few guiding principles that we have worked with, along with the Michigan Conference, that are helping us in the implementation of our phases when we are able to do so. And the first one, of course, is that the safety of our church and all of our participants is going to be a top priority, especially with rapidly improving technologies and our abilities that we have. Any decision that we make on whether to have in-person gatherings or to do things online will always err on the side of safety. We want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. We also want to state that it is the governor who sets the minimum standards for our safety, and Newburgh United Methodist Church, along with district and conference offices, may choose higher standards for that safety as well. And we'll continue to check in with local public health officials and the Wayne County Health Department, as local decisions are made that will help us to assess our situations. We will also have several safety standards that we will be asking ourselves, and we'll go over some more of those in specifics, and most importantly, that we will have cleaning protocols that our building custodian, Sandy Fillion, will be able to develop, and also to make sure that we are in compliance with for every type of meeting that is happening in the building here. And several questions that are being asked around safety as well, that help us to determine that. Based upon several guidelines that have been initiated, again, by the state of Michigan Public Health and the Michigan Conference, we have been asked to assess our risk level of our congregation related to the startup of worship and other activities. A lot of those things are based upon how many people does our sanctuary hold, what is our capability with respect to cleaning of the facility, what percentage of our church attendees that are in worship on a regular basis are over the age of 60, and several other recommendations as well. Based upon some of these standards, we have determined that between three risk categories of being high-risk, moderate, and low-risk categories, Newburgh falls into the moderate-to-high-risk category. So therefore, we are looking at maintaining the highest level of safety standards as we move forward together, when we are able to. We also have a few other safety standards that we know that we will ask, that will have people put in place when we do get back to in-person activities. We're going to be asking people that they're practicing good personal hygiene, paying attention to physical distancing is going to be critical in all decisions. And in the cases of anybody who is feeling ill or is running a fever, we want to emphasize that when we do have a time to gather together, then if you are meeting any of those conditions, you should not be gathering together, especially for worship. We will be requiring that the use of masks when entering the building will be mandatory, and that is for not only the protection of yourself, but also for the protection of our fellow congregants who will be here as well. The other thing that we'll get into a little bit more is around music and congregational singing, but masks also do help prevent that, but there is going to be a little bit more around congregational singing that Kyle's going to touch base on, when it comes to the spread of the airborne virus there. So these safety standards, we are going to be putting in place for all people as we go forward. After that, we have developed three different phases, when it comes to how it is that we will gather and reopen. And keep in mind, once again, that these are all going to be fluid, and again, we have not affixed any dates to these here, as we know that information is changing, and even this, as we're preparing for some newer restrictions to be lifted this week, we also know that the governor has extended stay-at-home into the middle of June. So these are opportunities that will present themselves as we move forward. We're going to continue online worship through at least the end of the month of June, but possibly even beyond. As we said, we're not putting a hard date on that, or until we are otherwise ordered by the governor or the bishop, and conditions change and we make a reassessment. Online worship will be expanded to mostly live, with a worship team of no more than 10 people, according to the current guidelines and practicing safe social distancing. Those who are in the high-risk categories, we are going to be asked that they refrain from being leaders in worship as we move forward at this time. The building during Phase One will remain closed to outside groups, until our risk assessment and risk factors have been taken into consideration, as to who and what in-person groups can meet. When we do get to that point where we are ready to start having some in-person gatherings, again, we will assess those based on the risk factors. Ministry team meetings are going to be asked to continue to take place online, if at all possible. Groups of less than 10 that don't meet in the risk factors with proper safety precautions, including the use of masks and gloves, and proper social distancing, could potentially meet in here, but that will have to be in consultation, in terms of where the ministry group is going to meet, and to minimize the exposure that other people would have in the building, so that we can also maintain proper cleaning protocols. We are going to be encouraging, if at all possible, for folks to still meet online, if necessary. The church office is going to resume normal operating hours for the season, which in this case, we've been doing for the duration from our summer hours, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. daily. Staff are going to be encouraged to do whatever work possible from home, and any work that needs to be done in the office, we will be requiring proper, safe, and social distancing, six feet apart, and when we have multiple staff that are together for a meeting, for whatever reason, the use of masks and gloves is also going to be a part of those protocols. As a reminder, these things are subject to change, and it's conceivable that over the next couple of years, we might be going into periods back and forth in any of these phases, with varying degrees of shelter-in-place. So again, we're not setting any hard, specific dates. Any dates that we do mention are aspirational in nature only, but we hope to be able to implement these things as soon as we are able. So that is a general overview of what we're doing in Phase One. And Kyle, I know you wanted to jump in here a little bit on specifics of worship as well, so why don't you go ahead and give us some more information on that?
Sure. So as Steve said, we've been worshiping online for quite a while, and we're going to continue doing that, at least through June. We want to encourage you, though, even though we're still mostly worshiping online, to participate as much as possible. We are going to have the availability, as long as the governor and the district allows us to, to maybe even have a couple people help lead worship from time to time, but there's lots of ways you can still participate from where you are. Even just jumping into the service, saying good morning, talking to people during the service, it's always a great thing to do. We also have about usually half hour of worship music that's being played before the service. Feel free to come in, listen to some of that music, let yourself get into the mindset of worshiping God, even before it starts. Also feel free, as we find, we found some ways recently, to have other people participate through making videos and sharing them with each other, to continue to do that. If you have any ideas, if you have a song that you would like to sing, that we could play during a service, you can let myself or the church office know, and we can, we'll certainly be willing to use that. We're very grateful to those who have participated, like Ally and Bev, who have helped us bring music to our services during this time, but we don't want that to be the only options we have. So anything that you would like to try out, even maybe try reading scripture for us Sunday, Ron Blaisdell's been hitting that up, and we're going to start incorporating more of that into our services. So even though we're online, like I said, be sure to participate. Don't let this be something that you simply watch, that simply happens on your TV, or your smartphone, or your tablet. Be involved with worship, just as you normally would be on a Sunday morning, just from a distance. Yeah, otherwise, we're going to try some, like Steve said, some more live things here from here on, and I think that'll be a bit more enjoyable to have a little bit less recordings.
Hopefully so, hopefully so. That's our overview of what we're calling Phase One right now. And again, these are things that are still in development, and we hope to have something a little more concrete to be able to release here by the end of this month, in the next week or so, so folks have an idea of where we're going. And part of your questions and feedback tonight will help us to shape that as well. So we appreciate that when we do get to the question and answer time, as we try to address some issues, but also perhaps bring up some other things here as well. I want to move on to what we are calling Phase Two right now, for our worship time. And Ally, I don't know if you have the files there of the sanctuary that we took, so we'll pull those up, so you can see as well. We're all working on this together here. While we go into Phase Two, we're going to continue to stress that online worship will be strongly encouraged for most members, and in-person worship will resume after the governor and the bishop's office do allow for increased gatherings. Now, our limits will be dependent upon those gathering numbers, and we cannot predict what those numbers will be, so those decisions will be made as they are announced. But prior to any in-person gathering, we will assure that thorough cleaning protocols will be happening and followed. A full cleaning of the building and rooms will be used and required before any other meeting or any other worship service will proceed. One thing we're going to emphasize when we gather together for worship, and these are the pictures that you're seeing on your screen right now, is proper social distancing, which will be marked for all seating. Exceptions are going to be made for persons who are coming together and living within the same household. But if you look at this picture that we have up here, Reverend Gassaway and I, the other day, went and measured out what six feet is between each of the pews, and if you can see our tape measure there, from the back of the very front pew in the sanctuary here, that means that we will be having seating every third pew, not every other pew, but every third pew, so that we can make sure that we have proper, safe, and social distancing. That is the measure of six feet. The second picture, which you're seeing on your screen right now here as well, is the six-foot distance that is between the pews. So we have that marker, if you can see that there, going from the end of the pew, right to where, I think that's my hand there, not Rodney's, that is holding the tape measure, that is the six-foot mark, which is actually right about in the middle of the pew. So our pews approximately are 12 feet across. That would allow us, on an individual basis, to have three people per pew, every third pew, again, with exceptions for families who are living together in the same household. If we count the number of pews that we have, and look at the, using that average of three persons per pew, every third pew, that means that we could seat anywhere between 36 and 39 people into the sanctuary with pews alone. Now, the other piece along with that is that if we were to set chairs along the side of the building by the windows, as far apart as we can from the pews, we actually have about an eight-foot distance from the edge of each pew to the wall itself. So that gets us within our six feet, and again, we can set those individual chairs up on every other row there, so that would get us to approximately a little bit over 50 people maximum in worshiping in the sanctuary, not counting those who would be helping to lead in worship as well. We want to give you those images there, just to show you that, for the time being, in-person worship is going to be very limited, and we have entertained some other options and alternatives, but the best alternative that we have come up with is that as we continue to offer our live stream and online worship, which we had actually started planning before any of this pandemic came about, for those who are in a vulnerable category, or those with young children, it is encouraged that you continue to do that, even as Phase Two rolls out. All persons, again, who will enter the building will be required to wear a mask, and if you do not have one, we are going to be getting people ramped up and also taking donations, that we will be able to provide one for you, if you show up here and do not have a mask for worship time. Other things we're going to have to get used to are differences in how we have done things in the past. For example, no greeters, no shaking of hands, there's not going to be anybody staffed at the welcome desk, we are not going to utilize name tags, anything that we could do to help reduce the spread and the transition there. We've got a few other things that we'll have Kyle touch on as well. But one thing that I do want to touch on is also the understanding of communion. I know a lot of folks have been talking about that, and I know I have seen some other churches who have been doing online communion. Without getting into the specifics of the theology of that, our bishop and officially the United Methodist Church has discouraged that practice, even though we are in an extraordinary time. So you've noticed that we have done things on the first of the month, the last couple months, and through the Easter season, where we have utilized the love feast, which was an ancient Christian practice that went back to a time where people could not be together and necessarily celebrate holy communion, but a time where all of us can come together and share in that meal. We'll continue with that, as we're able to, with our online worship. But when we do come back together, we are going to have to be very careful about how we celebrate communion, and making sure that proper safety is assured, and that our protocols are being followed. So it might include, if we do this, but not be limited to, using prepackaged communion elements, which would be the serving of individual bread and cups, as restrictions are relaxed a little bit. But one thing that will be true, which we've already had some of these protocols in place, is that all elements will be distributed only by those who are communion servers, after they have thoroughly washed their hands, wearing a mask, and wearing gloves. And we will be working on distribution plans, should we get to that point as well. I know that's been a question that has come up, want to make sure to address that as well. In-person ministry teams will be allowed to resume during Phase Two, whenever that comes, with proper safety precautions in place for meetings, as space is available. Persons who are in high-risk categories will, again, be encouraged to join meetings online, and all chairpersons should check in with appropriate staff, to make sure that that option is available for certain people going forward. The other thing that I want to say is a word about children's ministries here in the immediate future. Since we cannot guarantee proper social distancing and safety, in-person children's ministries will not resume, even in Phase Two at this time. Children will be encouraged to sit with their families in the sanctuary, and have that be a part of worship, but we will not have worship bags to hand out, we will not have doodle pages, crayons, et cetera. We have talked about the idea of bringing in your own items from home, if kids need to be occupied at that point, but families with small children or other special needs are going to be encouraged to worship online during this time. We're going to continue to offer our virtual ministries that you have been doing, and we're also looking at an online vacation Bible school experience for your children as well. We know that for some people, this may be a disappointment, however, since we cannot guarantee the safety of all the children and families that are coming in, we have to err again on the side of caution. We will be following health guidelines and monitoring what is happening, particularly within our public schools, as they look about possibly resuming in-class, in-person education in the fall, and so as those updates are made, as we move along later in the phase, and possibly into Phase Three, then we will certainly be in communication with that. Outside groups may meet following all Newburgh UMC safety protocols during Phase Two, and in compliance with the maximum number of people who are allowed, again, by the governor and the bishop. Now, again, we say this with the understanding that these are fluid times, we're not putting any specific times or dates particularly on Phase Two here now, but these are ideas and understandings, when we are able to get there, of how we go forward. And Kyle's going to, again, say a little more about worship, and what we'll specifically be doing in Phase Two there.
Yeah. So as we do, as we're allowed to come back together, at least in small ways, on Sunday mornings, what we're going to be coming back to is going to be very different from what we're used to. And as Steve said, that's simply out of necessity for keeping us safe during this time. Again, as Steve mentioned, we won't have greeters, we're not going to have a time to greet one another during the service. We're also not going to have any kind of handouts, such as bulletins, but also any of our hymnals or songbooks, we're not going to have in the pews either. We'll be utilizing just our screens during that time, for most of our songs and any liturgy that we'll have. Again, that's just to make sure that there's no possible, or at least there's less chance to spread anything, as we come together. Also, in the service itself, we are looking at some different alternatives for our normal music, whether that, because we all know that having a mask on kind of, well, doesn't prohibit singing, but it makes it difficult, to say the least. So we're looking at different alternatives, so that we can still have music, we can still participate in some way with it. Again, during the summer, since we normally don't have choir or handbells or things like that, we're going to continue to not have those groups meeting or performing, but we would encourage you, if you, again, have any solos, or duets, quartets, any small group, things that you would like to try, this is a great time for it. If you need some ideas, you'd like to do something, we're not sure what, you can always ask, either myself, or Dick, or Bev, we usually have tons of resources for music. So if you'd like to be a part of a service providing special music, we can certainly find a way for you to do that. And the other thing that we're looking at is finding ways to accommodate those who are high-risk. Again, if you are a high-risk individual, we recommend that you stay home, continue to participate with our, with the online services when we roll out Phase Two. But should you come, we are looking at some different alternatives on how we can accommodate people. One of those ways we've tossed around, but we're not super set on, is maybe having a service outside. There's a lot of, a lot of logistics that would go into doing something like that, especially as we'd want to continue to livestream it, but it's a possibility, there's lots of possibilities, including using Guthrie Hall, or another kind of overflow seating, but there's just no certainty whether those will be available, in any way that would make sense and keep everyone safe. So this is all just to say, when we do roll out Phase Two, know that we're coming back still in a very difficult time, and we're making changes just based on keeping people safe during this time. It's going to be a challenge for all of us to get used to these new norms, but coming out the other side, healthy, safe, and whole again, is going to be far better than any other possibilities.
Yeah, that is definitely, as we said at the very beginning, and as Kyle just reemphasized there, our health and our safety is what we're always going to err on the side of, as we come to this. And as we talk a little bit about what Phase Three might look like, and I'll say a little bit more about that going forward, we're going to have to realize that, you know, things are going to be different for the foreseeable future, and implementation, particularly of Phase Three, will depend on a variety of factors, some of which will include the governor's orders and instructions from the bishop's office, as it relates to our risk factors, and what the rate of infection is at this point, and they may have to be implemented on an individual basis, and we're still developing what those might be. And again, those will depend on those various factors, that we might have to even revert back from Phase Three to Phase Two, or even back to Phase One, depending on what is happening here. But some of the things, and these are very few that we've addressed at this point, as we look in the future, but some of the things we've looked at for Phase Three, is that in-person worship will resume with reduced capacity and reduced social distancing measures, as advised. We'll still require that masks will be worn in the sanctuary at all times, unless otherwise notified. And in-person ministry teams will be able to take place in compliance with safety orders, and all additional groups may resume their regular meetings in compliance, again, with safety orders at the time, which includes outside groups who use or rent our facilities. We, again, have to have some fluidity within that, again, depending on the orders from the governor, and other groups' comfort and risk factors as well. But there are some other things that are going to change, and we don't know exactly what they will look like coming out on the other side. Andy Crouch, who is a theologian and church leadership developer person, and he's part of a group called the Praxis Group, and they've published a couple of articles, which I've shared with some of our leadership, around what this new normal might be. And the thing that he compares this to is not preparing ourselves for a specific time, or a crisis, or a particular season, but preparing for a new age. He uses winter, which we're all familiar with here in Michigan, although not on a day like today, but we all do know those winter days come, and he uses the analogy of a blizzard, where we prepare for the blizzard, our job is to simply endure it, ride it out, we deal with a couple of the hardships, but eventually it passes, and then we help each other out, and we move forward. The other thing that he compares things to is the season of winter, as we prepare ourselves, making sure that we have proper heat, we have proper supplies. As we prepare ourselves, making sure that we have proper heat, we have proper supplies, our proper food stores particularly here as well. And we prepare ourselves for a season, but then that season passes and then we move on to something else. What he and the Praxis Group are comparing this age of COVID-19 to is actually a new ice age where something new has come in and it is not simply going to be something that we have to endure or be able to outlast, but that we must be able to adapt to as a new normal. And again, we don't know what all the answers are and so that makes it difficult for all of us because we all just want to get back to normal. But when we can adjust our thinking in the fact that we are in a quote-unquote "new age" or a new ice age, as he is putting it, and then we can plan our vision going forward, that will then help us to be more effective in our ministry as we are doing things now. But it does mean certain things will have to change. Among those specifically that even when we get back to Phase One, Phase Two or even Phase Three is that connections that we have done in between services as we know it will probably have to change. Again, with social distancing, but also as we look at the understanding of hygiene and how we share beverages and refreshments as well. Get fed, as we have done our Wednesday midweek ministries where we have offered a meal, will probably have to change and change for good. What we don't know is how that will look like. But for the foreseeable future, offering meals like that on a weekly basis is probably not going to be advisable again for the gathering space that is there. Again, these things are fluid and might change as circumstances change, but these are things that we are having to think forward and move on as well as we even talk about what Phase Three might look like. So for the foreseeable future, things are going to be different. But in the same token, we are also having an eye towards the future and how we can adapt and how we can continue to be the most effective in our ministry going forward. So those are the highlights that we wanted to give you. And again, these things are fluid and changing. And in fact, when we developed some of these things and put them down on paper here a little, a bit over a week ago, we had some more changes from the governor and the bishop's office. So again, we're having to adjust and we're having to make adjustments as things move on. But we offer these things now in prayerful consideration so that we all are aware of the goals that we're trying to achieve and how we can get back to being together while still being safe. With that, we want to take this opportunity, and we're actually doing really well on time here, it seems like. Kyle and I aren't blithering on too much, so that's good, we were worried about that. So we want to take this opportunity to get to some of your questions that you might have and have been asking as well. And so Ally, as you have some of those, we can, we can start getting to those right now.
Cool, so I see some of you guys' questions coming in. And if you have more of those questions, there's a text box on the corner. If it went away, it's on the top right corner of your screen, you can hover over there and you can add more questions if you would like. We are going to do our best to answer as many as possible. And again, if we don't get to your question tonight, I promise that we will continue getting out information to you guys as best as we can. So we will hopefully answer future questions as we all learn this together. So our first one tonight, I'm going to have it displayed up here, but I'm going to ask the guys, are we considering outside tent worship while the weather is good? This is our first question for tonight.
Yeah, well, as Kyle mentioned earlier, and that's a, that's a very good question. We do, we have considered outside worship while the weather is good. But when, when we say that while the weather is good, we also know that we live here in Michigan and things can change. Even as I began the broadcast saying, I hope you're outside enjoying the beautiful weather, and then very briefly I heard raindrops hitting us here in the sanctuary shortly after we began. So we do have to take those factors into consideration. The other factors that we have to take into consideration as we look at outside worship, and I think Kyle mentioned this as well, is the logistics of being able to not only have what we need to worship outside, but also still to continue our livestream broadcasts for those who don't feel comfortable coming in. We would have to mark off what proper social distancing would be. The other thing is that while we have a lot of chairs in this building that we can use for a lot of different things inside the building, we don't really have adequate outdoor seating. So we would have to look at an increased cost of renting chairs that would be adequate for outdoor seating so that quite frankly, the legs of our chairs would not sink into the ground as has happened even with some of us when we've been sitting outside for our church picnic here as well. So it could be done and it probably, if we do that, it would be on a limited basis. And we would have plenty of advance notice of when that would be as well. I don't know, Kyle, if there's any more logistical things you want to add to that?
Yeah, there's, there's always a lot. The number of tents, how we can worship together, since again, we can't be using any sort of bulletins or handouts, hymnals, things like that. Being outside would make that more difficult. It's not to say it's not impossible, it's just it'd be a difficult thing to put together. We are considering it, but we're also considering some other alternatives as well in addition to that. We've seen a lot of different churches around the country worship in some very unique ways lately. And as we see them, we consider them, whether they'd be useful for us as Newburgh and we bring them, bring it up and talk about them. So we will, we will continue to consider that as well as other possibilities as we move forward.
Yeah. Cool, and then we have another question that I will post up here. Is there a plan in place for baptisms? Is there a plan in place for baptisms?
Yeah, the plan in place for baptisms is that we will await instruction from the bishop, much like Holy Communion, about safe gatherings and safe social distancing when it would be appropriate to do baptisms and for that matter, even confirmation at this point. I'll interject here a little bit. This weekend coming up was supposed to be a regularly scheduled version of the annual conference for Michigan and it was going to be a big one here for us at Newburgh as Reverend Gassaway was to be ordained as a full deacon in the United Methodist Church. That was postponed, again, that call was made a while ago. And a new plan to have an online annual conference has been set by the bishop for July, the end of the month of July, so that we can take care of the business that we need to take care of, including voting on our new candidates who will be ordained as elders and deacons like Reverend Gassaway, and we'll take care of that then. Bishop Bard initially was going to have a in-person service of ordination and consecration just for those new ordinance and people being commissioned for ministry. But due to, again, health concerns, Bishop Bard has canceled that. And so the actual liturgical act of ordination is not going to take place till at least 2021, which is unfortunate, unfortunate for Reverend Gassaway. But for all intents and purposes, we are acknowledging that ordination. So again, following those safety guidelines is going to be what is key and most important for us when it comes to administering the sacraments and especially with the sacrament of baptism and with Holy Communion, which involves us being very close together, but also the act of confirmation as well. So the plan per se is that we want to follow all the safety guidelines. And right now, as far, as far as safety and social distancing, we're just not there yet.
We'll do everything we can to not baptize via squirt gun.
Yes. No super soaker baptisms. That got Ally there.
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to keep going here, all right. For our next question, what do you see as the future of our choir, specifically Chancel Choir?
That one, I know Dick has, Dick has been very forward with his plans for that. Until there is a vaccine for COVID-19 released and available for all, we are not going to be seeing the Chancel Choir return until that time. Again, it's just safety measures. There's so many of us who are high-risk in the Chancel Choir and the last we want is to lose anyone, you know, from, from some small accident. So we are, like much of the rest of our worship, we are going to very eagerly anticipate the time when these Chancel Choir can come back safely and whole.
Yeah, and I think it's important to point out that Dick was very adamant about that coming to us before we even approached him about making sure that the safety of the choir was more important. And that's going to affect our music ministries in a lot of different ways, not just the Chancel Choir, but all of our music ministries going forward. So we're going to have to do the best that we can. And again, that kind of goes back to the new normal that we have to understand right now as well. And the things that we're used to doing and that we just want to get back to, we may not be able to do in the ways that are familiar to us. And so we're just going to have to live with that and adjust with that with the prayer and the hope that someday we might be able to resume that. But for right now, that's the way it has to be.
Cool, and our next question here is, will there be a required entry and exit flow so that there is minimal, if any, cross-contact between attendees?
Yeah, that's a, that's an excellent question and one that we have been debating amongst us even here as, as a ministry staff about how that would be handled. So the short answer to that question is yes. The longer answer is we don't know exactly what that will look like. There are a couple of things that we do have to take into consideration. One is our access to adequate restroom facilities. As many of you who are probably tuning in know that we do have restroom facilities on the main floor here of the sanctuary, but that requires going down the hall into the office wing. We have the restroom facilities that are closer in the education wing, but those are upstairs. And so for anybody who has difficulty climbing stairs, we do have to make the, the main floor restrooms also accessible, which requires us opening up that office wing pretty much all the way down to the end. So then the question became for us, will we require people to only use one entrance on the east entrance of the building or the west entrance? The other thing that we had to take into consideration is our parking situation and how that is set up. Is that if we only had one entrance open, then that would require some people to walk all the way around the building just to get to that one entrance, which again, for most people may not be an issue, but for some, that also could be a hardship as well. And so we're having to weigh those factors in. A third one, as we talked about and considered alternative worship, one of which was having an overflow seating in Guthrie Hall, as Kyle mentioned before. Without getting into other specifics and logistics, again, it's access to restrooms and then at what point do we cut off access to people coming and going in the sanctuary down that main hallway and people coming and going from Guthrie Hall, which would have their own restroom access as well? And will we allow people to come in one entrance and then move to Guthrie Hall or vice versa? So those are all questions that we're having to take into consideration there. But that is a factor that we're going to be considering and how to best do that so we can avoid that cross-contamination.
Cool, and I have another question here. Would it be possible to do children's Sunday School Zoom, maybe following church service on Sundays? I could answer this a little bit if you'd like. So you can't see my face, but I'll answer it. Sorry if that echo is happening as you guys have said. But a little bit of how we have been able to conduct children's ministry right now is doing what you guys have seen Saturdays with Miss Karen. And if you haven't gotten on those, I totally encourage you to do that. Those are simply kind of like what you would say is our children's time for the week, right? So I encourage you to look at that, utilize that. I know Karen has much more in the works, so just keep patient with her and the program staff for the Education Department as we continue to, to see how we're advised going forward. But definitely there are things being rolled out in that department.
Yeah, the other, we are working on things. The other thing that we are actively considering is how we include and may or may not include others when it comes to doing something specific like was mentioned a Zoom meeting. If we do that, do we do that to the exclusions of others, particularly others who might be looking for a church home and what type of children's ministries we eventually will be able to offer to them once again. And so we want to keep our options as open as possible. That being said, considerations like that have been discussed and we're always trying to find the best alternatives. As Ally said, we're in effect doing our children's time and I know even our youth ministries have been doing some things online as well. And so we want to try to encourage people to look for that by following our social media, checking out and subscribing to our email lists here at Newburgh. And that's really the best way that, to get all that information for children's ministries and youth ministries right now.
Perfect. One, another question we have is, is the June 28th blood drive still a plan? If so, is there a plan for donor safety?
Yes, the June 28th blood drive is still a plan. A couple of us actually went back and forth about how we would approach that. And our ultimate conclusion was very similar to how we approached our decision to continue the non-food pantry as well. Is that this is an essential ministry at a time when people are very much in need and hurting the most. As I mentioned, our non-food pantry, when this pandemic started and we debated about should we stay open? And if so, how should we be able to stay open and distribute? We had the largest collection probably of toilet paper in the entire area and I'm glad that word did not get out at the time. So we didn't get looted there. But again, we determine that as a special ministry and so we have a set of protocols that our volunteers follow very diligently and we thank them for doing that, again, involving gloves, wearing of masks. In that case, we have the people drive up, there's only contact with one individual person who has proper safety protocols and then the items are distributed to their car where there's a little contact as possible. Now, working with, I continue to forget the new name of the former Michigan Blood, I will say. Yeah, and they have a new corporate name now as well. Working with them who are in the health, healthcare industry, they have assured us that there are proper safety protocols. We will be able to set up Guthrie Hall for proper social distancing. We will probably look at something like an appointment only so that we do not have a crowd of people that are showing up. And again, we'll have proper safety protocols as people are entering the building, much like you would if you were going out into a store now where you'll have to maintain a six-foot distance and go through the check-in procedures there. They have done this, giving blood is safe. They have proper safety and cleaning protocols that will probably not only meet, but will exceed even our cleaning standards that we would have here as well, as anybody would in the healthcare industry. So again, that's an essential service and for those who feel safe and are able to do that, we are going to continue to offer that. And I want to thank in particular James Frederick for helping us with that to make sure that we can, still make sure that we do have a blood drive in, at the end of June here.
Great, our next question is, are parallel virtual Facebook Live sessions being considered perhaps another time during service or at like Keese Upper Elementary, which is across the way? I know that this is a conversation we all have had about where we might, I'm guessing that this is a question about capacity in our building and gathering. So we did talk about that a lot and so I will actually hand that over to whoever wants to lead into that because that was a good topic for today.
Yeah, yeah, it was a big topic here. We've can, we've talked about several options, one of which is the outdoor worship, which we already addressed and a question was already asked about that. The other was overflow seating in Guthrie Hall, which could be done. We'd have to make some upgrades in order to make sure that that could happen in the most effective way. And we'd also have to... And we'd also have to make sure that our seating is done with proper social distance. And there are some other crowd flow factors that we would take into account. The counter question, the counter narrative that we always come back to is, what we would end up doing in Guthrie Hall would essentially be the very same experience that you would be getting from Facebook Live coming into your home. And so while we do want to try to gather and we understand the need for people to come together and gather together, we're also asking the question that is it, is it the best use of everybody's time and safety to gather to see the same thing that they could be seeing at home? That being said, we're sensitive to the fact that people are feeling the itch to get out and want to have some communication and interaction with other people. So that is an option that is being considered that we might be able to look at in Phase Two, more than likely in Phase Three when we get to that as well. I will jump in before I turn some of those other specifics over to Kyle. Is we have not considered an off-site venue, and that is for a couple of reasons. One is that we cannot control or assure that the proper safety standards and cleaning protocols will be there. The second is the technical aspects of it, of going to a remote site location and making sure that adequate internet access is available for us. You would think at the schools, that might be the case. However, having three kids in the schools there as well, I can tell you that dealing with internet access there is not always the greatest. But the other part is liability. And anything that we do here onsite is covered by our liability insurance. When we go offsite, then we run the risk of if there is any, Lord forbid, infection that somehow might take place that can be traced to anything that we've done in an offsite facility, we are not covered from that too. So we have to take our church insurance and liability coverage into that account as well.
Yeah, as Steve said, there's just a lot of, there's more logistics that goes into it. As you mentioned, there's some upgrades to the systems in Guthrie Hall that we would have to seriously consider taking care of before we got to that option. The other thing that I want to mention though is, one way or another, whether you're at home or whether in time comes, we roll out Phase Two, you're here in the church or in Guthrie Hall, one way or another, remember that you're still worshiping God. He's the same God here as he is in your home, as he is out in the woods, as he is on the lake, as he is everywhere. He's still the same God. He doesn't change. And so our worship is always, always so poignant. Not only does he take pleasure in it, but it's so useful for us. It's easy to get into the mindset of, well, I'm not really worshiping unless I'm at church in my pew, you know, with my organist doing my songs. But that's not who God is. That's not who we're called to be as Christians. So one way or another, we, and like Steve said, we're considering all of these options and more. But one way or another, for you, just don't forget to actually worship God wherever you are. Take pleasure in it. Find ways that you can do it effectively for yourself.
And to that point, you know, anything that we do, and even before the COVID-19 pandemic has hit, we had been making plans for the last several months and fortunately had upgraded and purchased a lot of new equipment for rolling out live streaming of our worship, which was the plan for us all along. And a way to reach new people so that they can encounter God through the time of worship as well. And I know even some of you, as I've had conversations on the phone or through some of our meetings as well, have said that you have in fact been doing more church, if you will, and more worship in these last couple of weeks than you probably have in the last year. Because the online worship opportunities give people the opportunity throughout the week to check out different churches and see what other churches are doing, what other pastors who may have served here at Newburgh have been doing. I know some folks have done that. I've even had former parishioners of mine in other churches that I have served. They've been leaving comments on our Facebook page about enjoying being able to come back and watch here. So wherever we are and we have the opportunity to worship, and the more opportunities, the better.
This question, what didn't come through the box, but it came through our feed. So has VBS, oh, hold on, let me read this one more time. Oh, okay. VBS has been a source of providing lunch meals for children. Is there an alternative I can help to that end? I can just go off of what we know from Karen if you would like. So in our discussion about VBS, Karen is working on an alternative for this summer for how VBS would work. I know she's considering all things as a plan in how we can safely do a virtual style VBS. She's been in talks with the conference and their guidelines and everything. So those plans, those plans will be released as we continue on. Again, when that is released during the dates, I believe that we've already had scheduled is when we anticipate to do VBS still. But as plans continue to develop, everything is going to change. So we continue to just keep evaluating and reevaluating. So we will be sure to let you know how you are able to take part in any of that. So yes, there are plans in the works. We just do not have a solid plan to be able to release at this time.
And that's an excellent point to bring up too about the meals.
Yeah. Yes, yes. Thank you for bringing that up about the meals. Another question that I have, and I can answer this, and this again came through something else, so I'll just answer it because it's youth-related. Asking about offering breakout groups for younger, for our younger population, maybe youth or children. I know that children's ministry, we will and we are advised by the conference to continue our safety protocols, which might mean not doing, or not, which does mean not resuming children's ministry at this time. For the youth ministry, we have plans in the works. Again, things continue to change and we have to make sure that we are doing everything with the right precautions. So as those develop, you will see more in the youth end from me on things that we can do. Hopefully in person, I can't guarantee that because again, things are changing. And we want to make sure that our top priority is keeping our youth and you guys safe as they come home to who they come home to. So a lot of this, I know it sounds like we're talking around things or it sounds like I'm talking around things, but I'm not. It's just a lot of learning how we're going to do ministry in a changing era. So you'll see more out from me as I'm able to do that.
Yeah, and I think it's important to point out that while we're, while you're all learning what some of this might mean and have questions about that, a lot of these are some of the same questions that we've been wondering and asking about. And we're all learning too about how we might move forward. And there's a lot of times different things that we haven't thought of. I've been talking with a group of other pastors in the area. And as we've been sharing with one another, each of us, every time we've gotten together, has said, oh, boy, I didn't think about that. Or I didn't think about this factor. And it causes us to have to take a step back and then reevaluate even the things that we thought we had figured out. And so that's going to be a learning process for all of us going forward. And I think the other thing too is that even as we ask some of those questions and we try to find solutions, at least I can speak for myself and I know some of the other ministry staff here has expressed that too. Even we don't like the answers that we come up with sometimes. But those are some of the harsh realities that we're having to face when we're approaching this. And again, having the error on the side of caution among everything else. And so we ask for patience and if we don't have all the answers sometimes, it means that we're not ready to be able to say anything that can make sure that we're being as safe as possible for you. And that's ultimately what we want our goal to be.
Yeah, and to jump off of that, I did see one more comment come in the thread of just, I take it, all that trip, all mission trips are either canceled or put on hold. For the youth department, yes, mission trips this year, our students and families have been informed are canceled for this summer, which is obviously a very hard thing for a lot of us to anticipate. But we do have the mindset and the drive and the plan to go forward with different ministries that we are able to do in mission in our area and we are able to execute safely under the guidelines that we are given. So to answer that, that yes, all mission trips for our youth are definitely canceled for this summer. But we do anticipate getting back out there next summer, so they're not canceled forever. Our next question is, is there a minimum quality requirement for the masks that we wear in service?
Well, again, that's one of those tricky things. I think the best thing to do is to refer people to the CDC guidelines for what is, what is an appropriate mask for your situation. The main thing that we're going to be emphasizing here is that having a mask, having a face covering is better than not. So having something is better than having nothing at all. I myself, of course, I have a spouse who works in the healthcare industry. So we're able to get ahold of different surgical masks that I've been wearing out. I know other people are using homemade masks as well. Other people who are using the official N95 masks, if you can get ahold of one of those. Those are of course the most appropriate piece there as well. But for me to recommend and for us to inspect what a minimum mask requirement will be, it's probably not going to be possible. But we'll refer you to the CDC guidelines. And as we look at what masks we would have to be able to provide for those who don't have one here, we'll be looking to those as well to make sure that we're giving what's the most effective and most efficient for you coming in. So again, again, it feels like we're walking around things there as well. But what we're going to err on is that everybody has a mask and a face covering. And as long as all of us are following that, I know I've seen some numbers and I hesitate to quote them there, but I've seen some numbers that when you have a group where everybody is in close, who's in that close proximity of six feet, you reduce the potential risk of infection by anywhere from 75 to 90%. And so those are those odds that we're going for there.
And a few more questions here. Kyle, this one's for you. So you and I have had music offerings with the split screens, how we've done those, singing and playing instruments. Would it be possible to do that with your choirs, I guess?
Possible, yes. That's about as much as I can give on it. It does, it actually does take a lot of work. Usually those videos that you've seen of like Ally and I or like Bev and I playing together, that's a lot of hours put into.
Several hours of editing.
Several hours put into about a three and a half minute song. And for something like with the choir, it also would depend on each individual's accessibility and ability to use the technology to actually make it happen. So it's something that, it is a possibility. The praise band is actually working on something similar. We're working on putting something together where they've played individually and are going to have a video of them all together. But there's nothing set in the plans yet. I've heard of individuals being interested in this, but not enough to actually make a project like that feasible. So if you do know people who are interested, you can feel free to refer them to me. If you're interested, feel free to contact me. If we have enough people who are interested and capable of doing it, then we might be able to pull something like that together. Yeah.
Cool. Yeah, as Kyle said, those videos take a lot of work. They're fun to do. So if you have some time on your hands, feel free to make one for us and bring it on in. I think that's what Kyle would love to also be able to have. Yeah, so definitely, like Kyle said, contact him and we can get those going for you. And I saw that there was a second part to it. And I think Betsy, that does answer a little bit of that question with small choir groups perhaps. If there's interest in doing those things, be sure to reach out to Kyle. As he stated, if you need his email, it is just hisname@newburgumc.org. So that's all of our emails. Feel free to get us at that. Our next question is, will Facebook services, this live option, continue indefinitely?
Yes. As Steve mentioned, we actually started live streaming our services before the pandemic hit. I and Steve had planned this, I worked on it for about six months beforehand, finding the right equipment, what we would need, the programs we would use, getting the funding through the endowment, and then getting it actually installed at the beginning of this year. That's always been the plan and it is the plan. We always have our services on Facebook Live. After the service, we also upload them to YouTube. So you can find them at either place every Sunday. And then of course, you can always come back to them later.
Yep. And as, just to piggyback on that, as Kyle said, was always our plan. And this is one of the things that I've been emphasizing about how we as a church can increase our use of technology in order to reach new people. And a lot of ways, that has already been accomplished. And we're not the only church that has been seeing that. As I mentioned, a lot of people are going on to other churches and checking out and seeing what they're doing. That's happening. But what we are noticing is that through our online reach that we've had right now, we're actually reaching more people than we have in previous times by just having someone come, have to physically come here to worship. And so that's always been our goal. And we started it just, we actually had the equipment and all the funding from the endowment came through about, what was it, two or three weeks prior to when the shutdown of the pandemic hit. And in fact, we were fortunate that we had already made these purchases and had acquired this equipment and started doing our live broadcast a couple of weeks before so that we were actually ready to go and far more prepared than even some other churches were to be able to do that. So that was the plan before. It's served us well right now and it's going to be the plan for the future going forward. So we look forward to continuing to broadcast these live streams for the foreseeable future.
One of the very first live streams that we did of our services, I actually shared on my personal, sorry, my personal Facebook page. And a friend of mine who has thus far been an avowed agnostic, he actually watched it because it's from someone he knows and trusts. And he said that it was the first time that he went to church since he was about 10 years old. So that just, that just shows the reach power that something like this has and why we are so adamant that we continue to do it.
Definitely. So our next question, it kind of goes along the lines of right here. So how many people are attending service online compared to typical attendance? I'll just start with this is, there's not obviously a firm answer we can give you with online statistics, but we can give you really good rundowns of what we see and what we're learning about all of this. Is that we have seen what we anticipate as a good growth in our reach. And on Sunday mornings, you can see kind of who's viewing at the corner. But I have seen people, if you don't know, I'm the one commenting to you on Sunday mornings and all that stuff. But I have seen and interacted with so many families that have said, I'm excited to worship with my Newburgh family and they live out of state. So we're seeing a lot of that. We're seeing people coming back to a place that they definitely call home and that's exciting. So I think that our reach is very, is going much further than what you see the number on there is. Because you can also anticipate who you're sitting with is also who we count in services when we think of how many attended that day. So a lot of our families attending includes, is a bigger growth than the number that you might see on that corner on Sunday mornings. So we do anticipate that our, our reach is actually much wider than what, what number you might see there. Do you guys have anything else to piggyback off that?
Our estimates are about, we have about 200 people per service joining us. Again, that's, it's kind of an estimate from the numbers that we see, calculating how many of those people are families and that kind of thing. So we, we think we're actually, we're reaching our, our normal numbers, if not more.
Yep, and the other thing that we're able to see on the Facebook administrators page is not only the number of people who are tuning in live, but also as the week goes on, the number of people who may go and watch it later. And the number of views goes up by multitudes. And depending on what service it is and what Sunday, of course Easter Sunday was probably the biggest one going in the, in most recent time. But we've had a few others there. We get a number of views on those individual services that go into the three, four, and even 500s. So as people are watching and sharing and other people who you might know on Facebook have seen that you have watched it too, it's piquing their curiosity. So our reach is going well beyond that also.
Also, as we've been expanding and giving a lot more content on our YouTube channel, sometimes through Facebook, but we also have a lot of, there's even more people who are finding us on YouTube as well. So even the numbers that we have on Facebook are not quite-
Not quite as accurate, yeah.
Have you, have you thought about a weekly rotation so that some families do in-person worship first and the third Sunday, other than the second? So rotating families through worship, have we thought about doing that?
That has not been given serious consideration right now. There are a number of factors that would roll into that. One is, how would you determine and at what point would it be a cutoff for which families would go where? And how would we make that determination based on what average attendance is? There's a lot of factors rolling in. I know I have seen that other churches have, that, that are out of state that have gone to, back to in-person worship. There's one in particular who had said that their sanctuary capacity for proper social distancing was 25 people, and they went to a sign up. So the first 25 that sign up, they get in. And then you start clicking off and checking attendance. And then you start asking yourself, okay, well, what about someone who is, has been watching us online, knows that we're open and wants to come in, but they somehow did not, they're not in our church directory, they're not the ones who knew how to sign up, and are we ending up turning them away simply because we're catering to quote unquote, "our" members here? Where while as we want to take care of everybody, the church is open to all people, and that's part of what the, the Facebook broadcast is there as well. So a rotational basis sounds good on paper, but then when you get into the logistics of it, then you run into a few more sticky wickets as well. And so while we're still not in a place where we're getting back to in-person worship, those are one of those things that we're going to have to really consider about, how can we best serve people? And what is the best way for people to worship, whether they're tuning in online or if they're going to come in? And then that's the other unknown question is, once we do reach capacity, how do we handle those folks going forward? So again, those are questions that we're going to have to answer once we are ready for phase two or phase three.
Cool. And I don't, I see a few more questions that we'll do here. And first, I'm proud of you much family for being on time from your kitchen table. That's exciting. But yes, so another question here, where did it go? Sorry, I scrolled off of it. Was, oh, here it is, okay. Are we reaching out to the immediate neighborhoods about the in-person worship or online service? And I'll, I can just quickly start that off from the advertisement end. So on communications, you will see like, with the use of Facebook, a lot of it is boosting or whatever you, we call it as, from whatever device it is. And that is our best way to get Newburgh into the hands of people around us. It allows me to designate the zones that I want to post to. And therefore, when I post things like this video or YouTube videos, I'll do what you call a boost. And that boost allows me to say, I want the southeast or southwest Michigan area to be really hit hard with this from Newburgh. And that should show up onto your fa, on your feed. And then also, if you share these things, our videos, we really want you to help us in this. Again, the church is more than just your, your staff people. So if we can get you guys, your help, hosting a watch party on Sunday mornings, that invites someone on your Facebook page to join you in worship. Sharing a message, if you're like, oh, a few weeks ago, there was a really good message that I really liked, share that on your Facebook page. Make a quote of what in that message really stood out to you. And in all honesty, who doesn't want more encouragement on our Facebook pages? If you're anything like me, I want to see the encouragement, the, the things that are bringing life into a time that, that can be really hard for a lot of us. And that is what our goal is. Our goal is to flood your pages with you with things that encourage people during this time, because that is really what the church does best. So we are reaching out to our immediate neighborhoods. It is definitely more virtual than you would anticipate. And we have, we do have plans for like signage and things like that. It's just a matter of getting to those, especially when other businesses that get to orchestrate that are starting to get back into service, that they can, they can help us out a little bit more. But that is definitely things in the works.
In every age, no matter what it's been throughout, throughout human history, the best way to get people to do a certain thing or follow a certain thing is always through your personal relationships. On Sunday mornings, through the internet, wherever it is, Steve's face, as beautiful as it is, is just a random stranger's face to the rest of the world. Until you share with, with a friend, with a coworker, with a family member about Newburgh, whether, until you share the service or the page or whatever it is, you give your, what's the word?
Endorsement.
Endorsement, yeah. You give your endorsement to Newburgh, to, and to what we do here. All of a sudden, that opens up worlds to those people who are around you. So that's always going to be the best way of, of advertising Newburgh, is you.
Yeah, as, actually as both of you were talking, I was reminded of a conversation I had in a meeting when I was serving in Midland on the ministerial staff there. And the, the question was, well, you know, there's so many kids we're not reaching in our youth program, how do we grow our youth program? You know, what way can we do that? And I, at one point stopped and I said, look, there's no one program that we will come up with, no one super idea that is going to make anything any bigger. The thing that's going to grow the program the most is if you yourself invite someone to come and to be a part of that. Now, this was back in the late 90s, early 2000s there. And it was interesting, because then later on that spring, as we were getting ready for our spring break mission trip that we used to do there, different calendars, different settings. But I had to go to the church administrative board and ask for additional endowment funding for our spring break mission trip, because ordinarily, they would take about 20 or so kids and the, about 10 or so adult leaders. That spring break mission trip, we had 42. And as I said, I challenged them to invite their friends, and they actually listened. And we had a good problem in the fact that we, our fundraising efforts that were normally enough, were not enough to accommodate these kids, and we had to adjust going forward. But the simple act of invitation and sharing was what got them there. And the online world, as Kyle was saying, is, is no different. The more we share about how important Newburgh is, the more we'll be able to reach out to people through, through what you do.
Great. All right, and I think this is a good one last question that we have here. Do you, have you considered renouncing Jess, or guest liturgist? I guess, have we considered using guest liturgist? Which we, we did touch on this topic earlier, where we did say, we, we are open, we want people to send in videos. Right now, it's, it is, it's that, it's sending us a video, but also letting us know that you, you are interested. If you are interested, who, who is it? It's Kyle, oh, just send it to Kyle. Just bombard Kyle, don't email me. My email, my email address for all of you, just so you all know, my email address is kyle@newbergumc.org. Or steve@newbergumc.org. Go to those, no, I'm just kidding. But do, do, send us an email. If you don't know who to contact about something that you want to get involved with, if it is being a liturgist, if you're like, I am musical and I would love to help and provide a musical piece, if it's an instrumental piece. We've, we had a, a student of ours do a flute solo for an offering. It doesn't need to be for a special Sunday. Every Sunday is special, and we want you to be a part of it. So, so get ahold of Kyle, get ahold of me, get ahold of someone. We will get you in contact with the right person. We want you involved. This is definitely not something we just want to do on our own. We want everyone to be involved in some way.
And from a pastoral perspective, I will jump in and just make the distinction between liturgist, which we have traditionally done amongst our ministry staff here, because of, leading, leading in worship is, is something that they are trained to do. Myself, Reverend Snyder, Reverend Gassaway, Dr. Dunbar, who has helped us and is getting more involved in that as well. But we've also had a tradition of lay readers for, for the scripture and help and participation that way. When this first started, and we were still trying to feel our way through this, and also when the bishop came down and said that there was not to be any other persons in worship at that point, we wanted to make sure that we had all of our technical things worked out before we started expanding things out to other people. In the last couple of weeks, we've been able, that we've, since we've gotten many of those technical things figured out, we're still encountering a few things here and there, and we know that. But we got most of those worked out. We've been able to expand a few things here as well. And we'll see some of that coming this Sunday on Pentecost Sunday. But the main thing that we want to do is make sure that what we are presenting to you and to everyone else is of the best quality, so that we're putting Newburgh's best foot forward. And we didn't want to be a part of messing that up. And so once we have gotten things figured out, then it has made it easier for us to open up things to other people that we've seen in the long run. So yes, as we go forward, we'll be expanding that even more.
Just like so many other ministries here at Newburgh, if you have an interest in doing something, say something. We will find a way to help you do that. We'll find a way to plug you in to where you can work. Or if it's a new thing, it's, we'll find a way to start considering that for the future.
Absolutely.
Cool, I think that is all the questions that we have coming in. So I'm going to hand it back over to the guys. But again, if you have questions going forward, be sure to check out our, our emails. I, I tend to hopefully send out, like Steve really does get a lot out in that Monday Minute. So be sure to like, like this page, subscribe to our YouTube channel. Be sure to read the emails we're sending you guys. I'm, we're trying our best not to bombard you. We know a lot of information's coming from many sources that you're keeping up with. But take a moment in those. And we also try to use every source as another time where we can sit together and encourage each other. Because those Monday Minutes, it's not just an announcement page, but it's a time of devotion. So get involved in those, because those are things that, that we, we tell you what's going on, we try to inform best. So keep up with a lot of that, but I'll let the guys close it out.
Yep, well, first of all, I want to say thank you all for joining us tonight, and thank you for all the questions that have been coming out. We appreciate everybody's feedback as, as we move forward with this. And just to reiterate that this is uncharted territory for all of us here. And so we're trying to do our best and use our best practices moving forward. Just from some logistics, I'll hand it over to Kyle here in just a second, and then I'll come back for a closing. But just a few logistics for us going forward. These standards that we are developing and will be working on again throughout the rest of the week, and we hope to have them out by the end of the week, the first of June, so that people can see what our plan is going forward. We hope to have those to you as best as we can. And realize that we are not going to be able to think of everything, which is, we have our town hall here tonight. It was helpful to bring up a few other issues around meals for VBS and the like. We appreciate that feedback. And there's going to be other unanticipated things that come up that we were not able to foresee. So again, we'll be making adjustments to this going forward. We'll also release this alongside the document that the Michigan Conference has put forward, so you can see that, how we're working in concert with the bishop's office and our leaders throughout the state. And knowing that each church and each situation is different, and the circumstances here at Newburgh may be different for other people. So we appreciate all that you have done, and we appreciate all that you continue to do to support our church going forward, and to support our ministries that we're continuing to do going forward here. So Kyle, any closing thoughts?
Newburgh is not dead. Our doors are closed, but we're not closed as a church. We're certainly alive. We're just transplanted and trying to get used to the new soil. So, and as we, we're going to continue to do this, we continue to upgrade, continue to try to put out as much Christ-centered devotions and services as, as we possibly can. Just in this time, keep looking for where God is, both in your life and here in the church. Don't, don't give up on Him or the church just because we've moved to new mediums or are trying some new things. Keep looking for where you can find God and keep finding, finding how you can grow as a disciple of Christ.
And, and on that note, this Sunday, we celebrate Pentecost and the birth of the church. And for those of you still watching out there, be sure to wear your red on Sunday too. I should have mentioned that in the Monday Minute yesterday, and I forgot to do that. But wear your red for Pentecost Sunday, even as you're watching from home. But as we mark the birth of the church, we're also reminded that over our 2,000-year history of the church, we have endured quite a bit. We've endured persecution, we have endured other types of plagues, other types of famine, all throughout the centuries. But the church has survived, and the church has adapted, and the church has thrived, because our main goal is to be able to make disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world, and to share God's kingdom here on earth as it is in heaven. And so we continue to try to do that here in this day and age. And it is our hope that one day, we will be able to meet together again safely and in a way that continues to build one another up. And so when that time comes, we look forward to having the opportunity to be together. But in a sense, we are all still together, because we are all still God's church. As the old Sunday School song had said, you know, I am the church, you are the church, we are the church together. It's not a building, it's not a steeple, it's not a resting place, it's us, it's the people. And so we together, as Newburgh Church, can go forward and we can survive this together. Thanks so much for tuning in tonight. Thank you so much for your questions, and we'll look forward to talking to you again soon. And we'll see you this Sunday as we celebrate Pentecost. Have a great rest of the evening.